Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Lebanon City Council meeting Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. Welcome, Dan.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer.
Here.
Mrs. Monroe.
Here.
Ms. Wyatt.
Here.
Mr. Shoep.
Here.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Here.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
Please stand for our invitation and pledge.
And then, God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through your you authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed, assist with your Holy Spirit of counsel and fortitude, the President, our Governor, all other government leaders of these United States and here in Lebanon, may they always seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy for protecting the natural rights of life and liberty. Grant that they may be enabled by your powerful protection to lead our country, our community, with honesty and integrity. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. If everyone would first take a look at consideration of work session meeting minutes, April 7th, 2020, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
In consideration of regular meeting minutes, April 14th, 2020, and a motion to adopt.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yeah.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
All right. No previous business, so we're going to go ahead and move on to new business. Number one, Resolution 2020-044.
Excuse me. Resolution 2020-044 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit grant application to the Ohio Public Works Commission and execute contracts as required.
Mr. Branca?
This legislation will authorize the city manager to prepare and submit a grant application for the North Mechanic Street reconstruction project to the Ohio Public Works Commission for fiscal year 2022. This would be reconstructing North Mechanic Street from Warren Street to the north to the dead end, and the grant amount would be approximately $400,000.
Right. Thank you. And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Yes. Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
I'm also here, and I vote yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yeah.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
All right. Number two, Resolution Number 2020-045.
Resolution Number 2020-045 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit a grant application to the Ohio Public Works Commission and to execute contracts as required.
Mr. Branca?
This legislation will authorize the city manager to prepare and submit a grant application for the new street reconstruction project to the Ohio Public Works Commission for construction next year, in 2021. This would be reconstructing New Street from North Broadway Avenue to North Lane, and the grant amount would be $900,000.
All right. And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
I just had, I had one question with that. There's a little section of sidewalk up North Street that had been taken out previously, and it's just blacktop now. Is something like that going to be addressed during the construction here?
Is it on New Street, or is it actually on North Lane?
North Lane.
Okay. It wouldn't necessarily be included in this project. We could. We'll take a look at it. Typically, you know, obviously, when we go in and do these projects, we try to get all of the sidewalk within that street either replaced or repaired. So we can definitely take a look at it and see. Kind of depends on how far up, if it's, you know, close to the termination of the project or not.
Yeah. I just had a resident ask. They thought they were going to get concrete, you know, put back, and it was just blacktop, so.
Okay.
I like the idea of checking on that, so that there's some continuity too, and versus blacktop. I understand.
Was it part of, did yours ever get concreted?
Yes.
Okay, because I know some of the ga, was the gas meter they were doing that they put blacktop?
Took them a little while, but they got it.
They were, when they were replacing the gas mains, they were putting blacktop and then going back to do concrete. I don't know if that was, if that street had that similar work or not.
We'll take a look at it and see.
Great. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes. Number three, Resolution Number 2020-046.
Resolution Number 2020-046 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit OKI STP funds grant application for roadway improvements.
Mr. Branca?
This legislation will authorize the city manager to prepare and submit an STP grant application to OKI for financial support of the 2024 urban paving program. This will include portions of Cincinnati Avenue, South Broadway Avenue, and Main Street. The grant amount through the STP program would be a little over $1 million, and then the city would be combining that funding with ODOT funding through their urban paving program, and then actual city dollars to do the project.
So we have no federal tied into this? There's no federal funds at all?
STP is a federal program.
Okay, because that, not the last okay, I mean, and the one before, they were saying that some of these are not being funded, but that could be for this year. I would have to clarify that.
Yeah, I know there's been a delay in some of the releasing of some of the grants for this year's projects, but, yeah, this is, what, about four years out, so I think they're still accepting applications.
Okay, I just, because I just know they said that some of the stuff had not been funded by the federal government for this year.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And so I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Sorry.
Is that a yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
All right. Number four, ordinance Number 2020-047.
Ordinance Number 2020-047 is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a 2028 through 2030 non-pool power sales schedule with American Municipal Power Incorporated or AMP and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Branca?
This legislation will execute a new power sales contract with AMP for 10 megawatts of base load power for years 2028 through 2030 at a not-to-exceed price of $31 per megawatt hour. This is something that the city routinely does, kind of looking forward and looking at where energy prices are, and, you know, looking for opportunities to try to lock in our future power needs at good market pricing. We feel like now's a good time to pull the trigger on it. We were quoted a price of about $28 per megawatt hour. Obviously, that fluctuates every day, so the contract would be for not to exceed $31 per megawatt hour, but we certainly anticipate getting, getting the cost locked in below that 31 and kind of take advantage of depressed power prices right now.
All right. So I'll first entertain a motion to adopt.
Mayor, could I add one thing, just somebody who used to work in the industry?
Yes, please do.
Just to give you context, I think in the early 2000s, the city was paying roughly $90 a megawatt hour. So this is roughly a third of that. It's kind of like buying, if you could buy gas out into the future at $1.25 a gallon, so it's a very good, very, it's very aggressively priced. It's a very good deal.
All right. Thank you very much. Entertain a mo, did I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion or comment?
So the purpose of declaring an emergency on this one is just to go ahead and authorize you to go ahead and watch those prices so that you can lock it in at the right time, and you don't have to wait that 30 days?
The, yeah, exactly. The intent would be to actually lock in the pricing tomorrow. So typically, when council approves the contract with emergency, then we can kind of lock it in as early as tomorrow and make the purchase, so. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
All right. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to let folks know the city building will begin opening back up next week, so it will, you know, kind of be a process. We are still encouraging folks to use the city's website, our online utility payment, resources, applications, permits that are online, as well as the payment and document drop box that's located outside the city building. But again, we will begin opening, you know, to the public for business next week. I do want to let folks know we are starting to see event cancellations for this summer, so we have been notified that the Memorial Day Parade has been canceled, as well as the Country Music Festival in June. Both of those event organizers let us know that they've canceled those events, and they haven't indicated that anything's going to be rescheduled, so our understanding is they're just not going to take place this year. We have got some inquiries as well about, from businesses, about, you know, what their fire code occupancy limit is. The governor's directive in terms of allowing businesses to open back up includes a 50% threshold from an occupancy standpoint of what the fire code allows. So if businesses have questions about this, please contact our fire department at 316-0170, and we can certainly help them, help them through that. Bit of good news, we are launching our new city website this Friday, so we're super excited about that. I think aesthetically, it's much enhanced, has a lot of updated information. It also has some good tools for us to communicate with our residents and our businesses, so there's a way for folks to kind of sign up, get us your email address, so we can get regular updated information out to the public. And there's also, you know, tools where folks can, you know, do business with the city pretty efficiently. So that goes live this Friday, and encourage folks to get online, get their information in the system. There's just kind of a general public information platform that we're going to use, and then there's also the Rave Emergency Alert System where folks can get us their cell phone numbers, and that would be more of an emergency notification system. So we're going to continue to get this message out over the next, you know, next few weeks, but wanted to make that announcement tonight. And then the last thing, I know, Mayor, we were on a conference call regarding the procession for the graduating seniors. I think the school district is planning on doing that in lieu, or partially in lieu of a graduation ceremony.
Right.
There will be, you know, to do it effectively, there will be some police presence required for the procession. I know they're still working out some of the details, but typically the city has not charged for services associated with community type events like that, but I wanted to make sure council was aware of that and okay with that approach, since it wasn't included in the actual in-kind service ordinance that council previously adopted, but that's kind of the working plan right now.
And just to go along with that, and having our last call, our call yesterday, school district is that they are the ones that are organizing it and doing all that they need to do. They will roll that out to their seniors and their families when they do the public operations and get all the details worked out. So it is their, it is their event, so to speak, as a way to honor the seniors in some way, since it is, things are very, very different. So the school will roll it out, but just to have some police presence in terms of direction, getting them directed to in the right areas, because it's going to be all the seniors, and we got, they have a big class of 400, I believe, 25 or something, somewhere to that. So it's a big class, but they want to do something that helps recognize them in a very unique year that we're all having. So.
And it'll be a.
So in kind, so would that, would be just like an in-kind service like we do for any of the other parades. Does that sound good to everybody?
Absolutely.
I think that's awesome, because the community needs something positive, and that's outside. It's easy to socially distance yourself.
And they're, they're following all the, all of that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's fantastic.
It's getting creative.
I think that, I think that actually can be. I know there's at least two of us in here who have seniors in Lebanon, and more who have seniors, so.
Yeah.
There'll be at least two of us there beaming.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That's great. Hopefully, the weather will be good.
Yeah. Okay.
I thought my class of 80 was huge. I think we had 265, and we were like one of the biggest classes.
That'd be back then.
I came from a class of 94, so there you go. Okay.
1994?
Yeah, yeah, in 1990. Thank you, Doug. Yes, absolutely. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have, Mayor.
And do, we're good? Okay, discussion items. Councilmember Schaefer, do you have anything this evening?
Yeah, I just had one question. Is the alerts that we, you were referring to earlier, does that come from the city, or is that Warren County? Because I know, I know right now I receive them from the county.
Yeah, this would be a city-specific alert system, and it's managed by our police department, by our dispatch center. So they're going to be the ones that have kind of taken control of the system, but it'll be for, obviously, public safety emergencies, but it would also be an effective way for us to notify neighborhoods if there's a water main break or, you know, utility disruptions.
I think the boil alerts are going to be, because in the past, there were people who complained that they didn't know there was a boil alert.
Yeah, yeah. So, and we had a system called Code Red in the past that was, you know, somewhat effective, but the change that we've made is kind of taking ownership of this and putting it with the police department, so that, you know, dispatch is manned 24/7. So even if it's a utility disruption, they're going to be the ones launching the calls.
Cool. Thank you.
Anything else?
No. I just wanted to add something, you know. Senior, senior year, last day of school, that's something that I looked forward to from a young age, and for all those people to not have that big day this year, I mean, my word just goes out to them. So hoping they can all move forward, and that universities are opened up in the fall so that they can get going with their lives.
Yeah, exactly. Counselor Wyatt, anything?
I actually got a few. The first thing is just to publicly recognize all of our city employees. This, this, I just was, you know, the last couple of weeks, made aware of their schedules. Some are working different hours, some are working week on, week off, some were from home, and these things, just having done the, done the shifts that I used to do, I know they can impact childcare if there's, if there's significant other, works an essential job, it could custody issues, caring for a parent, and I know it's stressing everyone. I can't confirm, I thought I heard somebody say they had a family member being tested for COVID. Have you heard that? Have any of our city employees had somebody maybe tested?
We have, we have one part-time firefighter EMS person who's in quarantine because the station that he works at part-time outside of Lebanon had a confirmed case. Yeah, that's the only situation I've heard.
Okay. I just, you know, it's, it's, we just don't know. You know, my daughter's tested positive, and she has a respiratory version of this, and I'm waiting for that phone call that I can't breathe. I'm going to the ER, because she's not getting better. It's a little stressful. The other thing is, I have just reached out to some council members at other, I had to, I had to get tested, so I had to sit for five days inside too, and not go out, and spent that time reaching out to council members just at random, other cities our size, tried to focus on AMP members that we have a little bit different income than some other cities have. And everybody that I spoke to have been very impressed with the small business grants that we did, the loans. And no one's done that, that I spoke to, none of the cities. Sydney, I think it was, just spent all their ED money on land for wellfields, and they're like, the timing was just incredible. But they have to have the well, they got turned on the taps. But it's, it's been neat to be able to share. I, you know, are we missing anything? Is there anything else we can do to help our businesses? And, you know, in that time, I've talked to a lot of people, citizens, small business owners. There's a lot of fear, there's a lot of frustration, anger, but there's also a lot of support out there between people, between our small businesses. I think everybody's trying to help the best they can, but, you know, we have some that are worried about when we reopen, how safe is it going to be? We have, if you look at, our town's no different. A lot of downtown shops, no matter where you go, have got retired people that work in them. So we have, this shop owner's worried about staff. And I know we'll get through this just fine, but I have had people, and I appreciate all the, all the people that did reach out to me about various topics. Some, again, there's, it's the, quite a variety of emotions that are coming down the pike, but, you know, I think with what we've got handed to us is the mandates and the reason up, and it's, it's coming. And, you know, I just hope this city continues to support our small businesses even after this opens up, because they're going to need us for a long time. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Schaefer?
I would just commend everyone for upholding the dictates that have been passed down from the state, and want to encourage you not to be afraid. Don't fear, just act responsibly. If you're compromised, or if you live with someone that has a compromised immune system, please quarantine or distance yourself as you see is needed. But, yeah, one thing I'm concerned about is I keep hearing people talk about the new normal. We should not settle for a new normal when we come out of this. We need to be back to normal. A new normal implies a heavy hand from our state, from our state house, and a heavy hand from the federal government, and that is not what our country was established to have. And so when, when we do come out of this, we need to stay on our leadership and push them to give back everything they've taken away. Everything. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you very much. Counselor Monroe?
I just want to echo a little bit about what Krista said. I agree. Our small businesses are what, we need them. They are what makes Lebanon so amazing. So I understand that Amazon is super convenient. I get it, but please, just, there's value in keeping your dollars with local, small business, family-owned business. I know there have been some lawmakers that have criticized the situation because the big-box stores are open and all the small businesses are not. So they're, they're going to need us for a while, but I would just, I, of course, think people should look at small business the way I do, and I would hope that regardless of the situation, and when things return to normal, a true normal, hopefully, people will see the value in the small businesses, because it really just, the, it's, it's what makes the community. If, if you, if you just name, like, 10, there's so many small, if you just name 10 that come to your mind, and imagine them being gone, it would not, Lebanon would be so nothing special. And it is something special. So please keep your dollars with local, small business.
Yep.
We, we say that all the time. We've said that for years. We always say that.
But growing up, growing up here, anything you needed was downtown. I think, Doug, you're probably the closest one to, in that era.
Yeah.
We had our clothes, our jewelry, our pharmacies, anything you needed. You might not everything you want, but everything you needed is downtown.
I understand, and I'm going to get a good pair of running shoes in downtown Lebanon, but there's a lot you can do.
Well, we used to have, but we used to have a shoe store here.
I know, and we don't now, but, you know, I, I mean, I know the limitations, but.
But we had that, that town, and I think most small towns did.
Yeah.
But then we went away from that, and now we're getting back to the more unique, personalized stores, and those are the places that, yes, some of them have a fantastic online business, and they're, and they're surviving. Their heads are above water, but barely. But the others are the things you want, like I mentioned Yellow Springs, you want to go in and pick those things up and look at them and feel them, you know, and those are what are, and that's what we have to keep. We really want that, because that's what brings people here, the uniqueness of those little shops.
And the restaurants. Yep.
Yep, yep. It's a great town.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Counselor Matthews?
On mute. I want to echo all the, how proud I am of the staff and of city council for being able to help our small businesses. They're the lifeblood of our community. I'm looking forward to hopefully coaching in the LYSA soccer for my little four-year-old, and seeing on all the fields, all the sponsored little teams. And these are the businesses that, that help. They are there for our festivals, they're there for our 5Ks, and for us to be able to support them with our dollars, with our expenditures is really something special. It's a way of solidarity through the people that live in our community. In addition to that money, I want to say thank you again so much to the other members on council, and the other people in our community that stepped up for United Way Senior Program. We have multiple members of city council who at either their residences or at their businesses put out boxes for people here in our neighborhoods to drop off toiletries and shampoos and other things that are needed for those members that, members Shoep mentioned, for those vulnerable ones, those that cannot or should not go out to the stores. And the United Way of Warren County reported to me that it was over $10,000 of goods and volunteer time that went, that came from that, from Lebanon. So that generosity is overwhelming. So thank you so much for all the council, other council members that helped step up with that, that helped reach out for additional neighborhood captains, and thank you for everyone in the city of Lebanon for adding to that, that stance, and being that avenue of grace for our seniors here locally.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Messer?
Adam, quick question. Did, are we going to continue doing that? Because I know I have people in my circle that, that still want to donate, and still are dropping stuff off. Should I, should we shuttle that at our, at our?
You can continue. The, at the, we can still have that picked up. It just won't be the same type of organized push.
Yeah, yeah.
But they, people are still at home, and people still need toilet paper, so.
And I, and I was wondering, I mean, I can, without, without a problem, just drop it off to the county if that's what, if that's what needs to be done.
That would be the way to do it.
Yeah, that's what I'll, I'll just continue doing that then.
Perfect. Thank you.
And as far as, I do have some people who've reached out to me who, who are caterers, and they've asked me for, for specific families or people that, that might be in need, who have, who've lost those jobs, or can't work because they're injured, things like that. So if anybody has a need there in regards to nutrition, or basically need, let me know. They, they've asked me for, for names and addresses and numbers, so I'll be able to pass that information on to them if, if anybody watching the, so, or if anyone can give me that information. And as far as the, the small business program that we did, I talked to other members of councils at other cities as well, to kind of echo what Mrs. Wyatt talked about. And we did something special as, as a community our size, and again, I just want to thank the, the board for, and the city staff for moving so quickly on that. And then to, to what Mr. Shoep said, pressure works. We can see how well it worked just yesterday, as they, as they, as Columbus tried to announce a new normal mandatory, and there was a immediate and very large backlash. And so I think that as we move forward, I think we just. And so I think that as we move forward, I think we just, we keep pressure on, on the pressure points, and we get our individual liberties and our individual freedoms back to where they were, and we don't accept the new normal. We navigate, adapt, and overcome, but we'll be, we'll be in a position of our great past normal shortly, so. That's all I got, just thanks to everybody, you guys are awesome.
Great, thank you. Just a couple of things for me. You know that I've been on social media quite a bit in terms of really trying to do the post of highlighting small business, trying to do that a lot, just be extremely positive, promoting our spell of business, as everyone is talking about it, kind of consider it in our country and our community, the backbone of our country, what makes our community, the pulse of our community, our small businesses. So I've been just trying to find all kinds of ideas of small businesses. In fact, we had some people reach out and say, I never knew that business existed, and the business has been here for years. So kind of, kind of marketing those businesses that are sometime tucked away, that maybe nobody knows about because they don't need the service. So if anybody has any other ideas they want to share with me, I will a lot of times just drive around town, and if there is something that I see, or I pull up next to a truck that is, provides some kind of service, I am taking a photo, you may not even know that I'm doing it, or somebody that's working on their house, Mark, I'm going to be highlighting your neighbor tomorrow, her beautiful home that they totally restored, was at their house today, taking a photo, just trying to create a positive, a positive image and a positive that we will get through this, we will rise to the, we will rise to the occasion to a great Lebanon, Ohio, back even greater than it was before this all, before all this happened. We all know that many of our businesses have stepped up. Today, our city workers were fed by Al Capulco. We had Billy's Burgers and Brews taking care of our police and fire, the Broadway Bakery baking cookies that, to me, you shouldn't have even eaten, they were so beautiful, and those businesses making hand sanitizer for them as well, and I could go on and on and on of all the wonderful things that businesses are doing. And what's interesting, throughout the year, you have a lot of, whether it be the schools or a gala event, everybody's always asking the small businesses to donate. They are, they are hit up quite a bit. This is our time from now to even when this is all said and done, and we were back, we're back to a more normal life. This is an opportunity now and moving forward to really support our small businesses, they truly, truly need us. So I wanted to say that, and this has been an unusual, different kind of an election. And so now, by the end of the night, I'll be thinking of candidates that are on the ballot who have had to wait a very long time, and unfairly wait a long time, quite honestly. School levies that are on the ballot, you have some major school levies in Warren County that are hinging on this levy, because it could be a matter of these levies don't pass. They're already looking at cuts with the way things have happened, they could be looking at huge additional cuts, so I'm keeping, I'm keeping all those folks in my prayers, because they will know by the end of the night what the, finally know what the outcome is, thank goodness. So just, we as a city, as we did our business, our grants, we are united, we are for our people, we are for our residents, we are for our businesses, we are for our city staff, and all the people that work so hard to make this a great community. I will say this in ending, I've seen a lot of wonderful things happen in our community, I've seen a lot of goodness, but on the other side of that, I have seen some negative, and I've seen some nasty and judgment. Use your words wisely. We are allowed to have a difference of opinion, this is the greatest country in the world, we be respectful of the different perspectives that people have, I will agree to disagree with you, that is the American way. So I want to say that, let's, let's, let's rise to the occasion here, and use our, be the best we can be during this time, because we will get through it with our liberty and rights intact. So in saying that, I'm going to entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Sir, second.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Just real quick, Mayor, while everyone is on, so we are tracking to issue the small business checks tomorrow.
Okay, great.
So just wanted to let everybody, since there's been discussion about that, make sure everybody knew. Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Ms. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
All right, thank you for joining our meeting, April 28th, 2020. Look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
Go on executive?
No.
Okay.
He said no.
Okay.